All right, we'll now call the city council special meeting to order. Please rise the invocation and pledge of allegiance, the invocation we give by Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the great liberty of the US.
Seated. Madam Clerk, you'll please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire, here. Councilmember McKeer, here. Councilmember Taylor, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard,
here.
Mayor Anderson, here. We have a quorum.
All right, our one and only be the fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three draft budget discussion. Melody, take it away when you're ready.
Okay, so what we're going to discuss tonight, one of the main things is the general funds capital outlay. That we haven't discussed before, so you the total capital outlay for governmental services. So within the general fund, there are several departments that have their own capital. So governmental services is anything to do with City Hall and departments related to City Hall. So the first thing that we have is the carry forward of the roof at City Hall. That was in last year's budget, was it in the? This will be the second year it's been carried forward. Um, we have accounting software for two hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety. The roof will come out of infrastructure funds and the software comes out of general fund reserves.
Okay.
So on the next slide, we've kind of got a narrative of each thing that is in the capital improvement plan. I don't know if you want to go through each one of those.
Yeah, just if anybody has any specific questions about each one of them, feel free to ask, otherwise we'll just kind of pause for a moment and move on.
One thing I did want to let you know is the accounting software is a carry forward from last year. Last year's budget, we had a hundred and seventy-nine, seven hundred and fifty thousand budgeted. But we now know the cost of travel expenses and the actual that actual price increased by thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And there's a lot more information about that in our next meeting.
Correct.
When when do we plan to have the roof repaired?
There is a bid. Is there a bid out on this one, as I'm thinking?
No, that's classic Kaladium. I got with David Roberts a couple of weeks ago and asked him to get back up on the roof. Get somebody up there to see if it need to be replaced. It first came up two years ago, not long after I got here. And they were supposed to get, we're supposed to get somebody up there then to see if it was going to be last another two years, five years. I don't know if anybody other than our maintenance guy or David went up there, but I asked him to get somebody up there that basically can give it us a better idea whether it needs to be done this coming year or it's got five more years. Have we had any leaks? Um, just can do the condensation a couple of times from the air conditioner backing up and that's been. But not the roof. Mike fix that, but no, but I want somebody to really look at before we do start getting leaks like we got over at the community center. Sure.
How long's that roof lasted?
I have no idea when it was last put on.
On March, no one came up and looked at it after the hailstorm?
Well, yeah, but they weren't really looking at replacing the roof at that point. There was some damage to the AC unit up there. And other than that, I I don't have the book to show exactly, but there wasn't anything to replace a roof, no. Okay. Well, I'm sure qualified roofers should be able to tell us roughly how long. Any other questions on those four items? Seeing none, move on, capital improvement plan for police.
So we have two hundred and twenty thou- two hundred thousand three hundred and forty dollars in for vehicles, which is um, in line with the contract that we have with sheriff's office and that continues out into twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, when we'll have to renew the contract.
That represents five vehicles, does it not?
Yes.
Okay, fire department?
Fire department, we have several capital outlay in here for the fire department. And I believe that Chief is going to take the lead on this. If I just go to the descriptions, Chief can explain.
Yeah, I'm ready whenever you want to go. You want me to go each one?
Hi, if there's anything in there that you think is pertinent that we need to know about, and then we'll ask if we have any questions for you. Probably maybe an update on the hardening grant, the big one and.
All right, so the update with that is we advertised for an engineer, we got no bids in. So we have resubmitted it. We talked to an engineer after that to see why nobody bid. He basically said, we are so busy right now, we're not looking for work. But if you tell us there's work available, we'll we'll bid on that. So what we did was we got with Andy Mogul to set it back out to everybody and then he's going to call them individually to say, you know, we had this project, you want to bid on it? So we should be getting bids in this time.
Is this just a civil engineer you're looking for or like can we use our uh, our gallery of engineers there or?
I'm not sure which is required.
Okay.
No, I think we for the grant, yeah, we have to go out to bid for the grant and there's.
Could we, it would it be inappropriate to send out an invitation to the few that are in our gallery for that? Yeah, I'll get with Andy to see if he sent it to them. I know one of the local engineers had told them that everybody's so busy, had given them some names of other engineers and that was one of them that actually the one that was helping us out is one of our three in the library. Ah, okay. Okay, have any questions for Chief on the capital outlay for the fire department?
The other thing I do want to want to inject because it's probably going to be one of the questions. Um, that gear washer is forty-six thousand dollars. I have submitted for a grant and we should know within the next couple of weeks. Uh, that seems pretty good like we're going to get it, but it's a seventy-five percent grant. We would be paying twenty-five percent. Okay, so roughly twelve, thirteen thousand for that.
Is it something that you would purchase if you didn't get the grant?
Uh, I mean, I would like to, but that's up to you guys if you want to budget. So basically, we currently have a bunker gear washer that is actually broke at this time. We're trying to replace that. We've had that for about twelve or thirteen years. It's done pretty good, but it broke. So we're replacing that, which we're required to have that. This new piece of machinery is not technically required, but I think it will be in the next year or two. So this piece of equipment that we're buying is different than the bunker gears. The bunker gear is like soft stuff that you put in. It's the stuff you wear on you. This other gear is your air pack, your face mask, your helmet, all that stuff that contacts you, but can't go into the bunker gear washer. So this is a different washer to decontaminate all that. I think that will be very quickly required too. But we're sort of getting ahead of the game to try to get this grant because nobody we've, we've only heard of two people and we're one of the two that are trying to get it.
And the purpose there is that you're you're sharing equipment with other firefighters as they come on duty and so you need it to be clean or?
Well, not even the sharing, just the fact that it has a bunch of stuff that you don't want to carry around with you and just hosing it off. They're basically saying isn't good enough. You need to really wash it good. So hot water, high pressure, all that is going to get that bad stuff off of that gear that we put back on our head and face.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Oh, in other words, when you get go out and do a fire like in the morning and you get hit with a bunch of contaminants and uh, and you come back, you take your bunker gear off. Do we have a spare set of bunker gear? Or do they have to go back out with the original set already?
So we're, we're basically, we have about sixty percent have two sets. We're in the process of trying to do that because we've added a couple of people in the past couple of years. So we're trying to get everybody with two sets of gear. We're not quite there yet, but we're close. So that that's part of this also is the four sets of gear. We used to do three sets, but that's not quite keeping up with getting two sets. So that kind of goes back to the other thing I was saying is that's separate than what this machine does. But yeah, your your logic is right. When we go out for a fire in the morning, we have that stuff on us. They trade out gear, so they have a clean set of gear. Because it takes a couple of hours to really wash all that gear and get it back in service. It doesn't, it doesn't dry like your normal T-shirt. So this is the other stuff. While we're getting the truck back in service, we can put the air packs and the face mask and all this in this machine and it does about a nine minute cycle for about four masks. So that'll get us back in operation quicker and cleaner.
I notice a couple of years from now, you've got the aerial truck on there.
Correct.
Any chance of any grants to help pay for that or?
Yeah, I'm learning more about grants. So yeah, my goal is to do that. And also on there, you'll see radios. Um, we bought radios about ten years ago too. Those are kind of slowly breaking on us. We have one right now that's not UL listed. Uh, we're still using it at this point. We're just sort of tracking it that that's not one we should take into a a dangerous area. But we're pretty sure we're going to lose another one or two in this next coming year. Um, so I have on there to buy three this year, but that's my goal is to work on grants for radios too, because those are pretty expensive. So yeah, I will work on a grant for the truck. That's definitely one of my goals. And I'm going to also try for the radios, but I left it in here for now because we really need to start replacing radios.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief? Seeing none, anything else you want to add?
Not for me unless you guys got any questions.
All right, moving on to transportation.
Transportation Department has a total of one million twenty-five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars in capital outlay. Um, it includes street improvements, sidewalks and curbs and stormwater and drainage that's um, in every year. It's been for a couple of years, so we just keep that number rolling forward. And then Rick's got a couple of things in here. That if he wants to discuss, he can.
What do you got, Rick?
No, we're replacing the F three fifty diesel. Two F one fifty super cabs. Uh, the John Deere tractor, we're going to push out to twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, the Super Duty with the crane for stormwater that's being pushed out next year, Street Sleeper pushing out three years. And then Michael's truck's twenty something years old, I believe it is. And we're looking at replacing that with a high roof cargo van. He does, you know, where he can store his parts and things in there without having to hook up to a trailer all the time or have them out in the rain and weather, saws and stuff of that nature.
Okay. Any questions for Rick on any of these?
Are these all additional vehicles other than the ones we've already seen in the other presentations or are these kind of overlapping?
These are the same ones we discussed last time. There's nothing added. I mean, like the F three fifty replacements got two, it's a two thousand and four and one of the Rangers were replacing with an F one fifty. Has a two thousand and eleven. It's been, they're not, they're not newer vehicles, they're older vehicles.
Okay.
Um, Rick, what kind of condition they're in? I know, I know, I see the year, but what kind of conditions the vehicles in?
Not too good a condition.
Can they be given to another department? If we, if we're going to give you new ones, can other departments use them? So I'm asking what kind of conditions they're in?
Rick, I got it. Rick, I got it. It's a good question because actually we just got an F one fifty four by four in today. Isn't that going to Jonathan who has that old SUV little thing that used to be?
Escort.
A little escort that'll become the city hall. So people here will be able to drive it instead of their own vehicle that they don't get paid to drive running errand. So yes, if if there's something we can actually used to be at City Hall and then because they didn't keep up with vehicles, it ended up with the the wastewater treatment plant, which is not where that vehicle needed to be. They needed the four wheel drive. Uh, two of the vehicles being replaced in here. Um, our deadline never to be used again. One of them's got a blown transmission or engine. I don't know. We got bunch of them out there, but right now they're driving around in a van that used to go pick the prisoners up to get two of our people around. So if we can use them elsewhere, yes, we'll use them to the life of it. Um, if we can trade them in towards new ones, we'll do that. Um, but like I said, two of them that were placed in the trucks, they're they're deadline now and the one that we brought up last time, the one that Mike Stone drives, his is twenty-two years old and a piece of crap. That's the one that had springs coming out of the seat. When Rick first got here and the poor guy had to put books in a a pillow on the top of it. Now it's ridiculous for a city employee to have to work in those conditions. And the truck looks like crap. Um, when I got here, I wanted all new stickers on. We should have some pride in the city and our vehicles looking good. And the vehicle that's that's going to replace it, actually Rick brought it up and I said, that's a great idea. A cargo van, when you start looking around like at Long's and American First and all these, they use them and they're so much more handy. And actually I was there with Andy when I looked them up and this was about eight or ten thousand dollars cheaper than a truck to get. So uh, and then his, if you approve the position, we'll have to keep his limp along for another year for the other guy to drive because we don't have anything for him. But to answer your question, good question on it. Yes, we we use them elsewhere in the city if we can use them. And in the actual items, uh, it does go into detail on the item number five and item number six. So item number six was the the F one fifties. You mentioned the one with the blown transmission. The other one was a Ford Ranger that's not capable of towing a trailer with the lawn mowing equipment, which is a requirement for that position. So that spells out those two pretty concisely. And then item number five details, uh, two thousand and eleven with ninety-two thousand miles. Uh, currently uses a sign replacement vehicle. And they need a vehicle that can tow the heavy equipment. So that's why that one.
Yeah, well, they're they're using the old mechanics truck currently is what it is.
Right.
And that was going to go to the signs originally, but that truck's says it's got a lot of miles on it.
Okay, anything else?
I just have a quick question, Rick, for the three big items, the street improvement sidewalks and stormwater changes were from that made a melody, we're keeping it the same. You know, is there some way we should consider whether we need to have more money in those areas to uh, keep up maintenance on the streets and sidewalks? I mean, it seems like we're fighting the battle every year to get improvement.
Yes.
Well, I just asked Melly, look, see what the reserve is in the infrastructure.
Okay, talk about that.
Well, the one thing with that is, isn't there typically, uh, I think it's every three or four years, there tends to be a grant that's available for uh, street improvements. There is it actually just put one in for next fiscal, the fiscal year will be going to for one road and that's what?
Sixty-nine thousand.
I see. There's not like blanket grants out there that. No, they're the, they're the small cities or.
Yeah, it's called S C O P.
Last year, we didn't get it. The year prior, we got it. Hmm, what about for stormwater since they're kind of harping on cities to start doing things with the stormwater? Is there anything for that? Not that I have seen enough. Rick has, he's been dealing with our stormwater.
No, I haven't seen anything or heard anything on stormwater yet.
I mean, realistically, that's probably the only way that we're ever going to get ahead on the roads is if we could get a hold of a big grant. So I would just encourage staff to keep your eyes open for that sort of thing, even if we have to, uh, you know, let's say it's for a new area of town or something or, you know, some type of an improvement. I mean, you know, we do have a few subdivisions that are looking at, you know, changing roads and things like that. So maybe there's an opportunity to parlay into some of those funds, but I just don't see how we're going to be able to realistically fund, you know, a million dollars a year, a million and a half dollars a year for road construction without some type of a grant.
I agree with that. It's tough.
And then the other thing with that scene, it's always EPI, they get, they're working so much, we can barely get them to get done what we do, send them to. Yeah, well, they're the go-to for all the towns around. So. Correct. Yeah. Anything else on transportation? Seeing none, moving on to uh, streets.
Streets, we have fifty thousand in for street construction and that's anything to do with streets that's not paving. And they have in there a power line striper machine for two thousand three hundred and forty dollars currently. Um, Mike Stone is actually using two by fours to stripe the lines. So.
Wow. Now with this, this would do the uh, the roads as well as the parking lots.
Yeah, do everything.
Yeah, now we we desperately need that for sure.
We do.
Now, is this the kind that has the uh, the reflective paint built in and all that that?
Well, it's what you pour in it. So yeah, if you bought the reflective paint, you could use that.
Yeah, so it's the real road construction type. Yeah.
It's it's not Home Depot paint.
Right. Which would also help us in some of our older parking lots so we could go back and possibly re-stripe some of those and.
Oh, absolutely. We could re-black top and re-stripe it.
Yeah, for sure. Make it look classy. So that'd be good.
And they just did the uh, the truck ride out there at the end of Lake.
Yep.
Going towards twenty-seven, but they did a beautiful job, whoever did it.
Yep.
I mean, you couldn't help but pull up and all of a sudden like, wow, this is a brand new road out here. So.
It really does give it appearance that, uh, you know, it makes the city look a whole lot better. Yeah, seventy, seventy-five hundred dollars. Yeah.
Yeah, and of course, the better the city looks, the better people feel about the city too. So and it does always a good thing to try to do our best to go in those directions.
Yeah. All right, anything else on streets? Parks and recreation.
So parks and rec, we have a total of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, capital outlay, three big items is the roof at the community center, which is a carry forward. Um, there, that's the one that there's a bid out on it already. So we're waiting to hear back from that. Um, the Firdapp grant for Dura Martin and the Firdapp grant for the MLK Sports Complex. Those will come before the CRA in planning and zoning um, this week.
Okay, yeah, so keep in mind too, anything that you think that we could possibly take before the uh, uh, RPAC, you know, let me know.
So part of this, um, we can, once we get the bids in for the Firdapp grants, part of that can go um, be reimbursed by RPAC.
Okay.
Um, but I'm not sure. I think you have to get the bids in and get ready to to do it before you can present to RPAC.
Okay.
Um, we have the roofs at Lucy Durnum, Durcom softball complex. I don't know, Rick, you want to discuss these little items?
Yeah, um, so the roof, that's the softball complex over there where the roof's missing off of them from back when the hurricane came through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, needs to be roofed. I mean, you can't use it. Well, you can use it right now, but there's no roof over it. So right, and that's been four or five years.
Yeah, far too long.
Yeah. The sand pro, the one we got now is, well, it's limping. It's it's done. It needs to be replaced. Um, the bush chipper. You look out on Maine and they're trimming trees, then they're loading on a trailer, then they take them to the parks and then they unload it. And they come back and they load it. When they could use a chipper and just keep moving along as they're going along instead of everybody loading up, going here, download it. And at the end, and they want to get a power, then they end up loading it up and then hauling it off. Doesn't make much sense to do that when you can chip it up and don't once a day instead of every trailer full of, you know, rough cut brush.
Does this have a special trailer that goes along with it to capture all the chips or?
No, we have a truck, a small, I believe it's a five fifty.
Okay.
Uh, with sides on it that they should be able to utilize. So it's automatic, anybody can drive it, doesn't take a CDL.
Awesome.
Um, the walk behind floor scrubber. That's for uh, community center, try to cut down on time over there or anywhere else that he wants to take it to.
Is that exclusively for the community center?
No.
No, okay. Where else do we use something like that?
City Hall.
Okay.
Right here.
Exactly, city hall, especially. Yeah, and floors up there need to be stripped.
Okay.
It'll be like two lane fifty fifty. I don't know, what is that? No.
Uh, that's a Firdapp grant. Um, that's in twenty-two, twenty, what is it? That's in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and then you've got the F six hundred with aerial lift in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, we pushed that back. We, there's a a lift that we would use for change all lights out instead of hiring contractors to come in on twenty-seven, change the bulbs out as well as trimming trees, things of that nature, get up on the roofs, making repairs.
Okay, uh, on these Firdapp grants, uh, you got the Durham Marketing Park, four hundred thousand and that repeats every single year. Are you uh, saying that we would get a four hundred thousand dollar grant every single year or this just be for every five years?
I think it's from what I've understand on Firdapp grants, because I've not worked with them. You have to have something in your CIP plan in order to apply for anything. So we've just, you know, had that number continuing throughout the five-year plan.
Okay, so can we name uh, other parks as well and give it a number and?
Yes.
Okay, so could we also put down um, Donaldson Park?
Also, on some of these buildings that need to be repaired, you know, whether we get grants or not, we also can take funds out of CRA because uh, Jerry says that CRA money can be used for uh, brick and mortar, mortar. So.
As long as it's in the CRA district, yeah.
Yeah.
So Donaldson Park would be in the main street.
Right, which is the one that has most of the excess money.
Right, and then MLK would be in Southside, I believe.
But they're, they're using hers up quickly.
Yeah.
But they do have reserves, I think. But those are all we could use maybe as a backup. If we don't get grants and we decide we need to do something, we should look for that money because I think that the advisory board is good with that. They've been talking about it also.
Okay.
Could you use both? Use the Firdapp for half it because it's a, since it's a fifty fifty grant and then you CRA for the other half?
Use it for matching, yes. Anything else on parks and rec?
Dude, I I I have a question. The softball complex, Lucy Dirkman, i- is that utilized ever?
I haven't, I haven't seen anybody out there. I mean, we're still mowing and maintaining it, but I haven't really seen anybody out there.
The only thing I've ever seen is there was a couple of leagues that utilized it, but.
Recently?
No, no.
Because it's been a long time since we had a city league going and I don't know, I just feel like some of that, I know we have to maintain it, but it's literally impossible to park there if we're, if anybody was to use it.
Mm-hmm. No, I agree with you. It's, I've been thinking.
Seems like it's a waste.
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to say that because that's taken away something that our youth can utilize, but if we can't utilize it, what's the use of having it?
Well, the problem is that we have, you know, we've got basically four, four baseball fields. Because we've got two out there at the airport and then we've got the two over by Lucy Dirkman there. The one, uh, the large one is the one that the high school uses. Uh, so that one gets utilized by them, but the other two are the only ones that the leagues are actually using now. So that one softball field that you're referring to, you know, like you say, I haven't seen it in the last couple of years and we haven't been able to maintain any of them to an adequate level. You know, all of the leagues complain about something or other because there's deficiencies all over it. So I don't know how to approach that about possibly taking one down and just eliminating it from having to maintain it to not soak up funds in the into it or what?
I believe that's the only girl softball there is. For recreational, isn't it?
Is a softball field different than a baseball field? Yeah, Little League field now, same thing.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's the same as a Little League field. So the ones out at the airport are not the same size as. The the ones the young kids play on are the same size. Their fences are a little deeper. There's only one out on the airport that's high school or not the ninety-foot bases. There's only one of them. All the rest are sixty-foot bases, the same as these two. Uh, yeah, Lucy Dirkman looked like a third world country when I got here. Yeah. And they've got it looking really good. It does need some roofs. They should have been put in in twenty seventeen, but it wasn't. It's too late to put in for that hurricane. Already done a back on that. But I agree, it rarely ever gets used. City might as well sell it as far as I'm concerned because I don't know what else to use for other than it does take a lot of time for our people to.
City might as well sell it as far as I'm concerned, cause I don't know what else to use for, other than it does take a lot of time for our people to maintain it.
Yeah, well, even if it's just an auxiliary, just field, but they're not trying to maintain it as a ball field, you know? Obviously, just mowing a grass and a field doesn't take nearly as much work as trying to actually maintain a ball field, so.
Well, it's the, actually River Greens is the one that does the outfield and sprays the infield, so the grass doesn't grow, but. I don't know, to me, we either keep it, maintain it, or we try to get rid of it, because.
Yeah.
We don't, it's gonna go back looking bad and like, you said, leagues are not that, but the leagues, you can do everything you want out there and they're still gonna find something to complain about, by the way.
Yeah, but it is an all or nothing situation, so, kinda, you gotta go all the way or don't worry about it.
Well, even if maybe we could check into, I don't know, some organization that would be interested in getting a girls' city league or, or even a girls' league going again.
Yeah.
So the, the, so the, the fields can be utilized and, you know, maybe the city could get a little bit of repercussions out of having that.
Yeah, well, as they were saying, it's, you know, the softball field and the Little League field are the same size, so it doesn't.
Right, but are they gonna be okay if somebody was to ju- make a league, a little Dixie League, Girls Dixie League, are they gonna be okay with additional, um, teams being at their field?
It's not, well, it's the city's field.
I understand that.
And, uh, I would say, yes, they're gonna be okay with it, or else they don't play there, you know?
Well, it's, it's always been, this is the girls', this is the boys', and this is the.
Well, you know, whenever I was a kid, I, I played T-ball, I played pitching machine on that field and T-ball on that field, so. You know, everybody, everybody utilized it.
Right.
Were you the pitcher back then?
I believe I was, actually. Not in T-ball, we don't have one, but the, um, on the high school field, so that's a city-owned field. Do we also, we maintain that field as well?
The one over by these two?
Yes.
No, the, um, South Forest State College maintains that, I mean, the high school maintains that.
Okay, but it is on the city-owned property?
Right.
Okay, but we don't do a thing with it?
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, well, I mean, obviously, you've heard from the council that we're open to suggestions, so if staff has any suggestions for it, let us know.
Well, I mean, I'm with Shelley, if we could find somebody to turn it into either the softball league or, uh, kickball's another big thing that people do around, well, maybe not as much here, but the cities and that, they have kickball teams get together, co-ed, have fun, so.
I, I think at this point, if you were to say softball, kickball, hey, come play, there may be some interest. Just because of n- nothing being offered for the youth and around Avon Park. Besides the schools, I'm not talking about school, I'm talking about the extracurricular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was last year, the bunch of ladies came in, they did have a kickball league. And I forget which part they were using it, but, uh, it said, they seemed to be pretty excited about it, I mean, it's too bad we couldn't go to them and see if they wanted to, see if they could get their kids into playing girl softball too.
Yeah.
I think that's the ones though that wanted something, a new field in the South Side, and the mayor threw out, we got up here and they weren't interested in using this.
Well, that may be true too.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, we get the roofs fixed, obviously, they need to be fixed, if you approve that money to get those fixed and we'll keep looking good and I mean, it's word of mouth just from, not from us, but all of you sitting up there, cause it isn't, the city can't start a league out there, it's gonna be individual and you know, it, it would be nice if it was used, we agree.
Yeah, maybe, uh, maybe we can send an email to the, uh, Firdapp Board, and, uh, I know that they get a lot of requests out there at the Sebring Sports Complex for that they don't allow, but perhaps we could allow, because it's sort of its own standalone field.
There's a lot of travel ball teams and stuff like that too, a lot of the middle school and high schoolers at, um, our school, they choose to do travel ball instead. So maybe even if we were able to let those organizations know that we do have a field that they are welcome, cause when they come, they bring, you know, like ten teams and do like a round robin type field all the weekend.
I'm surprised there's not any, I mean, I coached my daughters all the way to the state champions, uh, I got three daughters. And all of them played it up to their high school years when they started high school, but that was a really big thing. I'm really surprised that somebody's not us- utilizing that field for a travel ball team. I mean, we used to do Arcadia before that, we lived in Nokochoby, we used to call it Wel- Wellington for my daughters to play.
Right.
We traveled to States, you know, doing that.
A lot of them have to go to Lakeland, Winter Haven and all those places.
And the crowd that they bring in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? If not. Uh, I see this one just has capital, capital, oh, this is a summary of all capital improvement plans.
Correct, so we have in the general fund, we have three million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars in, um, capital improvement requests. A hun- one million, one ninety-four. Hundred ninety-four thousand, ninety dollars will come out of state grants, um, infrastructure, one million, nine ninety-eight, nine forty. And general fund reserves, uh, five ninety-eight, three sixty. And then our beginning, um, infrastructure balances four point five million at the end of twenty twenty-three. It will be three point, almost three point four.
Okay, questions on the summary? Seeing none? Citywide capital?
So this is gonna show, um, all of the capital for the entire city, uh, this evening, we discussed the general fund. On July seventh, we discussed water and wastewater, and on July, July twenty-fifth, we discussed sanitation. So we made some changes to the water and wastewater. Um, we reduced the water line. Line item by five hundred thousand. We reduced the lift station rehab by two hundred and fifty thousand, and we reduced the line pipe bursting by a hundred thousand. So total capital outlay in the water wastewater fund is two million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Sanitation, we had a garbage truck in there for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but upon balancing the sanitation budget, we are gonna be, um, in the negative without, um, expending any capital at all, so we removed that line item.
Okay.
Now for that additional garbage truck, there was like a lift garbage truck we're looking at?
The automatic one, like the one we bought last year.
Side loader.
Where is that one being used now?
It's currently being used when we have people that are ill or calling sick or on vacation and stuff, that's used to help keep the route up, so that they don't fall behind currently, but there shortly, we'll be bringing that into route, we're working on that right now to start it as a route and free those drivers up to start doing other things that need to be done.
Great, thank you.
New positions?
So we discussed all the new positions, um, at a prior meeting, we have a total of twelve positions, we did have thirteen. We reduced one of the, uh, we had two sanitation labors, we took that down to one, so total, um, additional to the budget this year for the new hires is six hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars. And then I've got it broken out by fund to show how much comes out of each fund.
Okay, any questions on this? Seeing none?
The next slide is a three percent cost of living adjustment, um, that's not included in the budget, but for discussion, uh, tonight. So the three percent cost of living adjustment is for all employees except for city managers, directors and supervisors. Um, all employees get a forty-five cent an hour increase annually based on the, the step scale, um, which is included in the budget. So again, this shows the total amount that'll hit the entire budget, a hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty, and then it's broken out by fund.
Okay.
And that's for, sorry, all employees?
Yes, all employees except the city manager, the directors and the supervisors.
Okay, I got you.
And anybody who may be, um, maxed out.
Anybody that's on the list, a little bit.
Correct.
And.
Go ahead.
You done, can I add to it? And you know, we have two unions here, we have to deal with, um, the fire union. Great to deal with, if Warren stays home. Nah, Warren's my buddy for years, um. We're not here negotiating, but I gotta say it, but my thought is, I know things are tough, but they're tough for our employees too. And I wanted to put this three percent in front of you for all the employees. Obviously, it's for you to decide whether you want, cause that's not sitting in the budget now, that would be actually going up a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Um, the fire department there, we're working with them, our next meeting is next, get together is next week, I think, David. And, um, you know, th- there's gonna be three years, they're looking at three percent for the second two years, cause they know they got a raise last year. And our ASME employee or union, we're supposed to be getting with them, they're not quite as easy to deal with. And then their head guy got COVID, so he couldn't, um, come negotiate, and he just got me last week, and, um, I gotta get with him on a date and time, so. It isn't that, I have no idea what they're asking for, but as city manager, I'm throwing out there that I think they deserve a three percent. I know it's tough, we say, well, it's tough for everybody, but we sometimes figure our employees and what they're dealing with, but again, we also know that budget time isn't easy on anybody, so it's, it's out there, which way it goes, isn't gonna hurt me either way, or I think anybody sitting up here, but I think I'd be, do a discourse to the employees who bust their butts around the city not to ask for it.
Okay.
Well, I may make that clear, then, so that three percent cost of living is basically the same thing you talk about the raise, which would cost a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Yeah, that, that is.
Yeah.
That's, that's the increase he's talking about.
Yeah.
Cost of living across the board.
Correct.
Correct.
Except for the, does that include? One, one of the uni- unions or another units?
No, that would include, didn't you, you include fire in that, right?
I did.
That would include everybody.
Fire too.
Includes everybody except for the fire chief, HR director, finance director, public works director, city manager and five managers.
Correct.
Andy Mogul.
Yeah. No, no worries, okay. All right, so the question to the council is, uh, do we wanna go with the, uh, three percent cost of living, which would total a hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars for all the employees that we just said? We don't have to do three percent, you can do zero percent, you can do five percent, you can do one percent. So the recommendation, your official recommendation is that we go with the three percent, right? It is, okay, so that's the official recommendation from the city manager, so what do we want to do? Any opinions?
What was the cost of living for last year, if you have an idea from the government?
I do not.
No, the cola that we used to hear a lot about?
Exactly.
Any, any idea, don't know what that was, okay.
And how many employees does this consist of? The one fifty-one, five thirty, how many employees did?
See, we have total of eighty-five, we were full, so it'd be minus one, two, three, four, five, six. And actually, Andy Mogul, our purchasing agent, isn't in the, um, he gets paid outside of the the, um, pay scales, so.
David's about to tell us.
No, I was gonna answer your question, the cola for this year was five point nine percent.
Okay.
That's what I thought it was, because that was the increase on the.
And, uh, to answer the other questions, around seventy-three employees.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three or seventy-four, somewhere in there.
Yes.
I would tend to agree, uh, with city manager, you know, I know that the inflation has, uh, hit pretty pretty significant this year, far more than three percent, of course, um, so.
Yeah.
For these people, for the majority of these people, uh, you know, this three percent means a lot. And, uh, it also shows that the city is trying to reward them for their hard work. Um, it does put us in a better position, you know, we probably are heading into a recession, which is gonna make the positions at the city more valuable, uh, to those employees, so I think that we're gonna be getting the most out of them, and I think that we need to affirm, um, that we are a good place to work for and that we do value hard work and we wanna make this a career, not just a place that you work for a summer or a year or two years and take your experience and leave, so.
This question is for David, David, when does the fifteen dollars an hour start?
Start the end of September twenty twenty-six.
So would this depend on how long the employees have, have worked for the city, or is it the same for the new ones versus?
Same for, yeah, same for the new ones.
Across the board.
And it's the forty-five cent, cent an hour increase plus the three percent?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
For, yes, for those that are getting it, the people that are maxed out at step fifteen, which may be five. Somewhere around a guessing, David, about five, six people been here that long. They don't get any raise every year, because, you know, you gotta cap it off somewhere, so they.
They, they would only get this.
They would only get the three percent.
Yeah. It's an odd situation, because we do have the different unions, so we have different people on different schedules, you know?
Well, I happen to agree with you, Mayor, I know that this. I, I hate inflation, it's affected everybody in this room and everybody in the city and this, they just counting this country, I mean, it's, uh, and it doesn't seem to be slowing down at all, but, uh, I think we finally got to the point where we got some employees that are actually happy to work for the city of Avon Park, that are proud to work here. I, I'm proud of the staff we have that's, uh, supervising over them, and I, I think that, uh, the last time we gave them a raise, I know that they were very, very grateful. I know they're hardworking, I know the ones that work outside are working rigor now through ninety-plus degree temperature all the time. And the ones inside are also working with old outdated equipment, which we need to improve, which will actually improve their attitude and, and their work, uh, attitude towards that, so. Uh, when it comes down to the bottom line, I don't think a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars is that lot of money to, uh, uh, to make the employees that work for a city of Avon Park that I'm a proud to be a citizen of.
I think it gives their, uh, their managers, uh, more leverage to insist that they do a good job. You know, whenever they're, whenever someone's well-paid, if someone's getting paid under the, at the industry standard for that job, you really have no leverage to say, hey, guys, why aren't you, you know, why aren't you working hard, why aren't you getting this done? Because they can go anywhere and make that much money for the same job, but if we're, you know, at least equal or towards the top and we have a good culture here, they're gonna wanna go to, go to war for you, they're gonna wanna do what they have to do to, to, to make it work, so. But like I say, I'm one person, still waiting on a few others.
I didn't disagree, I personally just thought it wasn't enough. I mean, that's what I was kinda.
I didn't think it was enough.
I, i- if you take care of them, they'll take care of you.
Yeah. Hopefully.
Well, we wanna hope that, yeah.
Right.
I, I, I agree with you, uh, uh, both of you ladies on that topic, but I also think we gotta be concerned about our, our taxpayers and, uh, what we're looking forward with also, so. It's the, the whole compass of the thing, I think that three percent raise, of course, is never gonna be enough. But I think it's enough to make them happy and proud to be working here, you know, and we always got another year or two to look forward to something else after that, to see if maybe, uh, inflation starts coming down, goes the other direction. Then, you know, we can decide whether the city expenses will go down and we might have more money to be able to give another raise again in another two years or, or by twenty twenty-six, so. I, I'm good with, uh, with the three percent, if it needs a motion, I can do that, it's up to you guys.
Any other questions, comments, before we make a motion?
I, I agree with the three percent, as Jim said.
Jim, you wanna make a motion?
I'll be happy to, make a motion, we go ahead and prove a three percent cost of living adjustment across the board for all the employees, except for the five or six director positions and I guess the fire department for now.
You say as, as presented?
As presented, so moved.
All right.
Thanks for the help.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions, comments before we vote? Seeing none, call a roll?
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, general fund? Were you about to say something, Mark?
No, I was gonna say thank you, and I didn't know if you wanted me to cover the next one, where the directors, cause some of them have upped their pay. And I don't think anybody had a question on that, I'd gladly answer it, and, um, also the supervisors are making fifty-seven and they'll be making sixty. And that was already in there.
Okay.
And just, just for comparison though, the fire chief, he only canned me four times, wanting pay raise, but maybe it was three chiefs. But you know, I moved him up to seventy-six, and that's the lowest the fire chief in Sebring, just as a comparison, not not anything to do with Sebring, but they're the most comparable city we have here, about same size, that's the lowest the fire chief can make down there, what Melody's making is about the lowest what they can make down there, so by no means are I mean, it looks high, someone's making twenty-four thousand dollars. I mean, it looks high. Someone's making twenty-four thousand dollars, but for what they do, it, it isn't. So I just wanted to pass that on. And, and I put that in there for transparency. I don't want anybody thinking, well, Mark gave them pay raise, didn't tell them. No, I wouldn't do that, so.
Yeah. Any, any questions for Mark on this?
Do you know what the total of that is, by any chance?
Uh, total of all the raises?
Yeah. For the, for those uh,
Well, that's six and four and, four and a half.
Seventeen and a half.
About eighteen and.
Yes.
Then whatever supervisor. And again, the same thing with the supervisors, that they're equivalent down in Sebring. I think that's about the lowest they make, so. They certainly deserve it for what they do.
Melanie, you okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just joking.
There was a city clerk in there anyway.
No, she's not a director.
Nobody cares about the city.
I do once she does the minutes.
I'm glad we got her. Glad we got all of you.
No, I think we, we have a really good team.
We do. We have a great team. I'm proud.
All jokes aside, I, you know, I look across the board. I, I can't see anybody have any issues with any. I think you all do a fantastic job. Every time I've asked any of you for any information, you're on the ball.
Exactly. You know, it's a, it's quite a, quite a happy feeling of uh, contentment to uh, to come and talk to anybody in the department from city manager on down. It's just uh, hate to say it, use this word, it's almost like working with family members, but on the good part, on the good side of the family.
I can assure you, it was not always this way.
Yes, I can assure you that too. It's uh, it makes coming to these meetings and come to city hall a lot more pleasurable too.
Well, and on that note, we're, I said when I first came here, we had to work as a team. And that's you working with me, me working with you, with city staff and with our citizens. That's the way it's been. I appreciate it. I see is, we're making a difference. Can't do it overnight, but we are making a difference. People see it. People tell us. Um, I did run into Judge Langford earlier though, and he wants water. He lives in the lake, so. He showed up a few days too early to vote, but on a serious thing, we appreciate you too. It's a, it's um, staff, likes coming. I don't know if they like being at meetings late, but they don't fear coming to meetings anymore. And that's not the way it's supposed to be, so. We appreciate it too.
Mark, no raise for you?
Huh?
No raise for you?
I'm on a contract until January, so, or February when mine runs out.
So we gotta be looking forward in February.
I don't know.
Yeah. So at the end of the contract, typically, you know, there would be a contract renewal. The council would decide at that point what we do, you know, going forward, what the terms would be. How, how long would the contract be, et cetera, et cetera.
Whether you wanna keep me.
Right.
It'll be a long meeting.
Do uh, you know, once upon a time, uh, we had to do like evaluations and all that kinda good stuff. Is that something um, that we have to do going forward? It, was that part of the contract that we had to do that or?
I guess we. Look, I know the, the first one was the first six months and.
Yeah, and we, that, we already did that.
Yeah, you did that. It was a year, but yeah.
Right. Okay, I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Any other questions uh, on the positions before we move to general fund? Seeing none, go ahead.
Okay, so this slide is gonna show you our millage rates and where we end up at the end of the year as far as taking money out of um, reserves. So I put it the four point two five in there. That's one of the numbers that were discussed at the last meeting. Um, that will leave us at a loss for operating of one point nine million. If we put the American Rescue Plans in and use the return on investment, it puts us at uh, positive two point four million. We take out the capital expenditures and the cost of living increase, and that puts us at adding one point seven million. And it shows the reserve balance will go from three million to four point seven million. So using the American Rescue Plan funds, um, that would be, as we discussed, using them for the law enforcement services.
Right. So keep in mind that the American Rescue Plan funds are roughly two point five million. So in every single one of these scenarios, even at the four point five millage, we're still using uh, seven hundred thousand dollars of that two point five million. So those funds are being depleted. So even if we had a millage of four point five and we continue this exact same budget next year, we are gonna be depleting those rescue funds. We are actually running a deficiency.
Correct.
So eventually something will have to change there, so. We had uh, we raised, I think, I guess four point five was what we had put our preliminary notices out for?
Correct.
Okay. So at the last meeting, um, there was some discussion about the four point two five. Ultimately, we put out the notices at four point five, so.
The four point three six eight one brings us at a break even using the American Rescue Plan funds and the return on investment.
Right.
Does that include all the uh, adjustments we're gonna do with upgrading the equipment in city hall and computers and things like that?
Yes, it includes all the capital we just discussed.
So everything we talked about, adding is included in that?
Is included in that number.
But not so much some of those vehicles that we hadn't, yay or nay yet, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
There were some of them that we talked about, some of those vehicles, we didn't necessarily say we were gonna do them this year.
No, you did not. So what we need to do is when we get, before the end of this meeting, it would be, um, I would need direction on what you want me to keep in there and what you, if there's anything you would like me to remove.
Okay.
Any other questions on the general fund?
Yeah, we'll be looking for uh, suggestions from the council, comments on where, what millage rate we want to uh, go with.
Cause I thought at the last meeting, when we were looking at the slides, the four point two five was gonna break us even even without it. So did we, we must have added quite a bit?
We added the um,
Computer and software?
Yeah, the increases for um, the additional uh, employees.
Mm-hmm.
And the increases for the uh, managers, that wasn't in there.
Yeah, so the increase for the managers, that was the eighteen thousand. Uh, we've got the three percent that we just approved, that's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Does that include in these numbers or that's, we're adding?
Say that again?
Are those two things you just brought up, are they included in these, this budget here?
Yes.
The cost of living and their increase in manager pay?
On the very bottom line.
Everything we've gone through, except for some of those vehicles are included right here.
Even the vehicles are included in there.
Even the vehicles that we discussed, but didn't necessarily say yes yet?
Yes.
Okay.
So do we wanna go over the vehicles before we make a final determination there?
We can. I, I mean, I think most of them seem like the necessity, but uh.
So if you don't mind, take us through the vehicles.
So we'll go back to transportation department. Uh, slide number ten. What's that?
Transportation. Looks like page twelve is the overview and then the descriptions are below that.
So we have the haul at man lift for thirty thousand, ninety and fifty dollars.
That we have to have.
Yep. Agreed.
So that's a yes. Um, the three fifty diesel utility truck for sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety.
Wa- was any of the vehicles questionable? I, I thought all the vehicles we, we had to have.
Uh, there's really not any that were questionable.
Yeah, the only things that were questionable were the, the other items like uh, what was a street sweeper, which has already been?
Boom truck.
Yep.
So this, let's see, the bush hog, that's good. The two thousand four, see, those other items are in um, twenty-four budget, not twenty-three budget.
Right.
I don't know. Okay, so for parks and rec, the only thing that would not be included that we had discussed would be the one eighty for the um, Ford F-six hundred with the aerial lift.
That's a hundred and eighty thousand.
Mm-hmm, but that's out.
That's pushed out three years.
Yeah, that's out to two, twenty twenty-six, I believe.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So we don't, that does not need to be discussed tonight.
Okay. So I mean, I don't really see anything else in here that's uh, you know, questionable. So is, is anybody else in the council see?
Does this take into consideration the grant money that we're supposed to receive?
Yes, so um, what you're looking at on this page doesn't include any um, it includes the grant expenses, but when you look at the total um, operating, it includes all, all grants. So the total here include, this is just operating. So you'll see the, it doesn't include the grants because the grants, the revenue will come in and the expense will go out. It'll be a complete wash.
Mm-hmm.
So this, this slide here only includes the um, operating and personnel costs and any capital expenditures that are taken out of the general fund. I know there's some of those capital expenditures that are taken out of the infrastructure funds.
Right.
So they don't appear on this, this slide. This is just the general fund.
Yeah. And this uh, budget was assuming a one forty fire assessment?
No, cause we haven't got that number. This is the um, old rate.
At one thirty?
One thirty.
Okay.
Right, chief? One thirty or one twenty-six?
One thirty, yeah.
Okay. And the only other thing that would affect this year's budget would be the uh, rate study coming for the water, wastewater?
Mm-hmm.
And garbage.
Correct. And that, we, we need time to implement anything that, any rate changes that we're gonna make. It's gonna take a little while for us to gather the information and pass the resolutions.
Okay.
Um, but we've um, been discussing those.
For the water, wa- water and wastewater, yeah. The sanitation ones.
Yeah.
We, we can get that one done quicker.
Yeah, we can.
A lot quicker.
Cause we don't have to go out and get a study on that.
In a matter of weeks.
Yes, it just has to be announced, to prove to you that it's fair and equitable to everybody that's paying.
So it could be implemented by the fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. And the other ones, we would be sometime early next year or?
I have not heard back from Florida Rural Water. I've reached out to them um, probably five times.
Okay.
And I know um, Jerry's reached out to him a couple of times and he tells me that, yeah, they're gonna get with you, but they don't ever reach out. So I don't know what um, you know, if we need to go out and actually pay somebody to, to do that study because Florida Rural Water, you know, it's a pro bono.
I see. Okay. All right. So back to our millage rate discussion. As we've seen, the vehicles were not really anything to play around with. They've already been tweaked and optimized. So unless someone else has a suggestion about a vehicle, the numbers that you have in front of you are correct. So I would recommend, you know, going with the four point three six eight one. That would allow us to uh, basically pull from those American Rescue Funds, which not really, but we will be pulling from those funds for several years. So it would give us a little bit of a cushion without having more of a uh, a budget impact. And hopefully by that time, we could um, generate some more revenues in a few different areas and, and um, you know, pick a few things and hopefully be able to make that maintainable. But keep in mind, you know, Sebring's at a, was it five point eight?
Five point eight one, eight five or something.
Yeah, Sebring's at a five point eight one millage rate. Was that with the increase that they're doing this year or no?
No, that's last year's rate.
Okay. So chances are they're gonna increase that even further this year.
I think the paper said they're staying with last year's rate.
Right.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay. So another thing this doesn't take into account is uh, how much our property values have gone up. Everybody knows that houses are more expensive now than they are, than they were a few years ago. So that'll have uh, some impact, but probably not more than what, one to two hundred thousand?
And that'll be next year.
Right.
So we know this year that it already went up like thirty-five million. So by next year.
Exactly.
You know, depending on what the, what the property values increase, our revenue will increase.
Okay. So the only two variables we have now are sanitation rates and our uh, fire assessment.
Correct.
Okay. There you have it. Don't know what else you could ask for information wise. Um, like I said, my suggestion is four point three six eight one. So look forward to anybody else's opinion. Don't all jump at once?
I'll jump. I think we need to go that direction. I agree with you.
I do too. I mean, I feel like if, if the previous administration had not driven it in the ground so much before, we wouldn't be in this predicament. So it's a little irritating that we're having to go fix it.
We're climbing out of a huge deep hole.
Yeah.
And we have been for several years.
The vehicle situation and stuff like that is just infuriating, in my opinion. So I guess now we just have to fix it.
Yep.
And I think the, one thing, I think the one thing we look forward to hopefully next year is that inflation will go down and that our, some of our tax revenue will go up, just like you said, uh, not only the house value, but hopefully uh, uh, new buildings and new businesses come into the city. So hopefully we could uh, maybe go in the other direction next year. But let's, for now, we have to continue to go, move forward and continue to finally upgrade to where we, we, where we should be, it should have been five years ago. And so you're right, we're catching up. Um, it's a tough year for everybody, but uh.
If we want the level of service to go up, then we have to be willing to fill the gap.
And that's the biggest complaint that citizens have is the type of service that we get, you know, and, and one of those is streets and garbage. Cause everybody sees that on a daily basis. But that's something we definitely need to look at too. But uh, I'll make a motion. We go ahead and go with the four point three and six eight one millage rate.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
So just so you know, the, when we go to the final, the tentative um, budget hearing and the final budget hearing, you'll vote on that again.
Okay.
And then on, once again, on the wastewater and sanitation, uh, we can increase that back to the highs that it was before without going through a, a, a voting change or didn't you say that uh, hasn't been raised in two thousand thirteen or fifteen and it, it went down, we could go back down to that rate?
Yeah, I was talking about sanitation and, and Jerry opined that as long as it's, we can prove that it's, we're not dr- pulling in a lot more money we need, that it's, you know, you can't, you, you can make a little money, but not a lot. And that's the way the resolution reads. The last resolution was in twenty fifteen when it went down to fifteen dollars. But the, didn't you say that the um, dumpsters hadn't gone up since two thousand?
Two thousand and four. So the last slide twenty-nine shows the rates. Um, so in two thousand four, the residential garbage was at twenty dollars a month. And it went down in eleven to eighteen. It went down in thirteen to sixteen and it went down in two thousand fifteen to fifteen dollars. So over that, those number of years, by decreasing the rate, the city's actually lost approximately three point eight million dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, well, that's something we definitely need to look at.
Well, it's just, we were looking at our garbage and recyclable carts. Well, we don't have recycle, but that's in this twenty fifteen, the one I'm trying to redline through. If um, a, a new annexed area comes in where they, they buy the um, our garbage carts, the ninety-five gallons, according to this is forty-seven dollars. Well, now we're paying sixty-two, seventy-five for them. So we'd be losing money. And when we are looking at uh, it's like, right now, if you got a two cubic yard dumpster and you get picked up once a week, we charge you forty-nine, seventy. Sebring, who's looking to up their rates, is our, is now charging ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents. If you get five pickups with a two cubic yard, you, you pay a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and Sebring, you pay three hundred and seventeen dollars. So that, but again, these haven't been um, any change since two thousand and four on that, so. We're, we're, as you see, we're losing money. We're, we're picking up garbage for free. And as soon as we're able to move to this, our new ordinance, which is in effect now, but we've got to get, actually, I'm personally working on giving the flyer that's gonna be going out there, but and our new supervisor's trying to learn as much as he can. And Rick, with his other forty-seven jobs. learn as much he can, and Rick, with his other forty-seven jobs, is trying to, to help out, but again, we've been picking up garbage for free. Bottom line, and, and the, the amount we've been picking up especially, so this, with these new positions, it's really gonna help. We'll limp along for a year without a garbage truck, because we can't spend more money than we make. And I think, um, you, you said it exactly on what's happened through the years, and, you know, you can't cut salaries, or can't cut personnel, and, and have a point three at Valorem and expect to run a city. That's why you have a city, so.
Yep. Agreed. Any, um, further questions on? Okay.
We was losing money picking up just regular garbage, or the excess garbage?
I thi- I think, can I sit here and show you the numbers? No, but I, I would say pretty much all of it, because I think we're picking up garbage that people aren't even paying. We're picking up more than once a week for people paying once a week for dumpsters. Um, the, and the amount of garbage that we were, or trees and limbs and all that, and, and the, um, solid waste part of it, that we're going around picking up with our clam trucks, we're certainly not making money on that. Sebring doesn't even have clam trucks.
How do they pick up their, their yard debris and things?
They, they do like we do. You have to bundle it or put it out, and then one or two guys jump off the back and throw it in. That's what we're gonna do, because you know, with a clam truck, you gotta stop, put down your legs, and, and pick it up, where this, you pull up, kinda like the cows, I fell in behind a county truck a couple of weekends ago, I wanna see how they're doing it, and they just, one guy jumped off, throw it up. If he needed help, the driver jumped off, just so much quicker, so.
Yeah.
But yes, we're pretty much, a lot of the things where people are putting out a, a lot more than can be picked up, and clam trucks, I found, what, three different ways we're charging people, right, Randy? I mean, it's by the scoop, or it's by a cubic yard, that no one knows, other than Randy and a couple others, how to even figure that out, so.
So we're not getting rid of the clam truck.
No, no, we'll still use it for our, our big stuff, certainly. It's, if Sebring could afford them, they'd get them, too, so.
Okay. Any other questions about? Seeing none. Anything else from staff? Seeing none. That concludes our special meeting. If there's nothing else for the good of the city, or entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.